Little firehead, dear heaven and father, we come at this time thanking you for this day. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. And as we move into our meeting, Lord, we're asking for your wisdom. We ask that you continue to keep your arms of protection around our county and our county leaders. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, we'll have a reading and approval of the previous minutes.
I make the motion to approve this review.
We have a motion to accept the minutes. Harold, your second.
My second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. There is no old business. We'll move right into new business. And we're gonna, the first item is RZ 190627, six crew properties. Ashley?
Okay, so 190627 is six crew properties. The property is located on Carlin Road out in Jasper. It's going from suburban residential to agricultural. It's a 29.4 acres total between the two parcels. The applicant requests the rezon for the purpose of selling to the buyer who wishes to build a home and a barn to have several horses. On that second slide that's not behind you, you'll see the location map and it's two different tracts. They're about 14 acres, give or take each, I think. And then on that next slide is the zoning map that shows that they're currently zoned suburban residential and the adjoining properties are also suburban residential. Further recommendation, staff recommends approval of the request to rezone 29.40 acres from suburban residential to agricultural. In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information shall be made part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review.
Okay, thank you. And who's gonna speak for the applicant?
I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add?
Uh, now basically what she said, we're the current owners and the potential buyer is looking to build a home on the property and have personal horses there as well.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board?
Are we approving this for agriculture from suburban residential? Well, this says for agriculture to suburban residential instead.
It's the white one.
Yeah. It's the one from suburban residential to ag. One of the other ones is ag to suburban residential.
Do you have a motion?
I'm opposed.
We have a motion to second, to recommendation of the stamp. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll close that hearing and we'll now move on to the second new zone, which is RZ 190628, affordable investments. Our good friend, Mr. Schaus, has returned. Welcome.
Welcome back.
Let's don't get carried away. Ashley?
So, I want to give a preface on this one. So, this one and the next one, which is 190661, they go together because the two of them will create two separate parcels together. So, the information in this one and the next one are very similar. But, this one is 190628, applicant is Affordable Investments and the agent is David Schaus. It is located at 643 Highway 136, Connector and Talking Rock. The request is to go from rural residential to suburban residential. It's one acre and applicant requests the rezon for the purpose of conforming to current zoning ordinances, to correct septic issues and to create a buildable lot. If you'll look at the map, that is the parcel in question for this portion. It's got the little star on it. And then you can see on the next one is the zoning map and it's got agricultural that surrounds it and then a rural residential lot is the one that's actually going to suburban residential. And then you can see, which is small, that you've got the current survey, which shows the current lot layout, and then you've got the proposed survey, which shows how those, this one and the next one, are brought together to create two acre lots. Staff recommends approval of the rezon request for one acre from rural residential to suburban residential. In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and the video recording of the planning commission hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review.
Thank you. Mr. Schaus?
This one comes, I think, as part of our bigger plan for the 60 acres, the thought both behind it, that we're not gonna be breaking into small parcels. When we bought this property, the house was broken into one acre, which isn't conforming. Should be really, or excuse me, it was residential was said it should have been an acre and a half and it's not. So, what we'd like to do is make it SR. But after doing some investigating, we found out that the septic tank of that current lot is actually on the ag property. And in order to do some lot line moving, to put that septic on the house lot and keep it an acre, then we needed to do, which was a zip it D, which was take a little bit of piece of that ag land, make it SR, which would then give us a buildable lot above it, which gives you a zip it C, the final. So, we're gonna wind up with two one acre SRS, which is kinda consistent going down the road with some other. There's already a culvert in for it, so that's what we're trying to do. We did do our perpets already, so it is a buildable lot.
So, the septic tank is on the other lot?
It's on the ag lot right now.
And you're gonna, so that's the next one we're gonna take into account. And that, are you gonna combine those into one?
No, we're gonna do, before I bought this, I went and talked to Becky and Ashley and we're gonna do, what'd you call it, a lot line change?
Yeah, it's a lot line modification.
And it'll wind up being a zip it C, which is the final, two one acre lots overlooking the lake.
Got you. Okay. Questions from the board?
So, you're playing on building a house on the lot that has the septic lines for the other lot?
No, ma'am. The, when we moved the lot line towards the pasture, which will then put the septic lines with the existing brick house, which was originally built in 1915 and '33, I think we figured out, and it had several additions, we're actually remodeling that and keeping it. We're gonna keep that house with us as this septic. Melvin's done a lot of work on that, said it was good, upgraded, and then build a new house on the grassy lot above it that becomes the new one acre lot.
Got you.
No mobile home on it. We are on 3D restriction.
Further questions?
The map here, I think I see it, but I just wanted to clarify. The existing exit's going from the ag, the remaining 60 acres to Highway 136. Is it on the part you wanna be rezoning or is it stayed?
If you're talking about the gate that goes into the existing 60 acre pasture right now, it stays on the ag property. The property line basically will go almost up against that entrance now, because that's where the fill line is, is in that pasture.
Further questions? Do you have a motion?
I make the motion that we're looking to approve.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation of the stamp. Is there a second?
Second.
No, don't play that word.
Are we doing these together or is it one at a time?
We only do one at a time.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll open a hearing, bug that hearing and open a new hearing on RZ 190661. Ashley?
So, this one is also Affordable Investments and the agent is David Schaus. It is 136 Connector Talking Rock. This one is gonna be taking one acre from agricultural to suburban residential. The parcel number is the 18030003. And again, the applicant requests the rezon for the purpose of conforming to current zoning ordinances, correcting septic issues and creating a buildable lot. And then I've inserted the same exhibit from the same zoning map that shows the star on the actual horse and it's ag rather than the rural residential like the last case. And then again, there's the current survey and the proposed survey. After reviewing the applicant's request to rezon this property from agricultural to suburban residential, staff recommends approval of this rezon request. In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's file and video recording of the planning commission hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made a part of the record and shall be available for the board of commissioners to review.
Thank you. Mr. Schaus, anything further to add?
No, this is the one that fixes it all.
Yeah. Questions from the board? Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to accept the recommendation of the stamp. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, any board comments? Any public comments? We're now gonna move into a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. I'll ask the county attorney to give us an overview of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. What you have before you is a series of a number of amendments which were, in part, initiated by some comments from board commissioners in interest in proceeding with some options, in part from recommendations from our office to comply with the recent changes to the Georgia's state zoning procedures law that put in place some specific requirements. And then just some, a few items that we caught in reading through the district regulations and we decided to put them all together in one kinda comprehensive amendment. I'm gonna read through the, I'm not gonna read through the amendments, I'm gonna go through each one of them and try to point out kinda what the purpose is and while there's a lot there, the changes aren't necessarily that big in terms of what's being accomplished. The first change to 67-14C really is a super technical item which says, which allows the board to recess a public hearing rather than adjourn a public hearing. Just technically, that allows it to remain open in recess rather than actually having been adjourned, then you would have to call a new meeting and advertise a new meeting. So, not a lot to that one. The change to section 6714D was a bit to change the format of that second paragraph to make it clear that it comes under section 6714D and also to reflect the fact that appeals from this board are no longer by a writ of certiorari, which was a hundred-plus-year-old procedure that many practitioners and citizens didn't have a great handle on, as it was a technical procedure that was in place. They've adopted a new petition for review procedure that just went into effect last summer, so we corrected the language on that to reflect that change. The change to section 6714J was to comply with the ZPL changes. We've provided for 30 days notice instead of a minimum of 15 days published notice. There are two, there are now two standards set for different types of zoning decisions. There's one set called legislative decisions, which are rezonings and use permits, which require minimum 15, maximum 45 days. But then, they also have quasi-judicial decisions, which is the term they use for things such as variances and appeals of administrative decisions. Those have to have a minimum of 30 days. So, what was decided was, in order to make sure that we don't try to figure out what type of decision it is, we're just gonna make sure everyone has a minimum of 30 days published notice. That will satisfy both conditions, regardless of the type of decision being made. Then we are moving into appendix A, chapter 67, which is the procedures and largely the procedure of this board, because it deals with a lot of the hearings that y'all conduct. The first, the change to section three really was to just add a few, a list of things that a public hearing might be held for. There weren't any subsequent changes. In terms of section 4.0, what it does is it made clear about how initiated procedures, but also made an indication that a property owner's newly authorized agent could be the signatory on a zoning or a land use intensity amendment application. So, there wasn't much, it was just kinda bringing the code up to the practice that was seen. Section 15, this impacts a little bit. What we do is actually took something out of section 15, which is some language in the second, at the end of the second sentence. It's, the language said, I've got it on my screen here, let's see. It said, what it does right now say, the planning commission shall follow such policies and procedures for the conduct of public hearings, and then there's a list of a whole bunch of paragraphs after that. But what it previously included, it said, except in cases where it is proved to dispense with formalities where due process of the applicant or interested parties will be unaffected. That's probably okay, but we don't want there to be any questions, so we took out the ability to take out, to not comply with the procedures, because technically, the zoning procedures law says you have to have your procedures spelled out in the ordinance. And if you have a provision that says, except, we may not follow those procedures, that arguably may not comply with it, or at least someone may challenge it if they really wanna try to find something. So, we just took that out. It's, you know, I don't think it creates a problem with how you're gonna operate your meetings, but we wanna take that out of the code to suggest that there was any reason that we wouldn't be following appropriate procedures. 15-4, we added just a, I believe this is always followed, but just to add into the actual ordinance, the last sentence there, which says, regardless of the amount of time each side is given, each side shall have the same amount of time, it's a requirement in the zoning procedures law. Putting it in the code makes it clear that we're meeting the zoning procedures law requirements. 15-6, the applicant's rebuttal kinda follows along with that, which says, the applicant can have rebuttal as long as there's time remaining. So, if the applicant went for 10 minutes and then the other side presented for two minutes, the applicant theoretically doesn't have any more time. Now, it doesn't change anything, you can always make a motion to add additional time if their time is expired, if we're keeping track of time. And so, it's not gonna keep someone from saying what they want if you wanna hear from them, but technically, we need to put that in there to comply with the zoning procedures law.
So, Ashley will become a timekeeper?
That there, that there should be a timekeeper, certainly for ones where it looks like it's gonna go for a while, or you have, you know, five or six or seven people opposed. And I think you've done a good job of maintaining it in the few meetings that I've been to. You hold people to it. That's all that we really need. Section 15-9, there was a reference in the second sentence that said, the commission isn't required to consider all criteria. And what I want is that you can, you can consider all applicable criteria. It doesn't necessarily mean that each one of them applies equivalently, but you can consider it and say, okay, that one doesn't apply, that one doesn't apply, but you're still gonna consider all of them. And then, there was a change in the last sentence. Previously, a failure to send a recommendation was deemed to be a favorable recommendation. And what we've done is, the failure to send a recommendation shall constitute no recommendation. I think it, you know, just states what really the situation is and not implying one way or the other, lack of any decision.
But, I mean, the application of that has been that it has moved forward with the staff recommendation. That part has not changed.
Right. All this says, if for some reason, you know, that there is no decision within the time period, it will go forward without a recommendation. As it was written previously, it would have been deemed to be a favorable recommendation by this board or this, the commission, even if they didn't vote to make a recommendation of approval.
Okay.
So, it just reflects the actual reality of what happened. 15-10, this is one of the ones when it was triggered, I think, some of these amendments to look for all the other stuff. The big issue is in the second paragraph on the next page, page six, which allows the board commissioners to approve a lesser request than was made in an application. Essentially, they can choose to reduce the land area that is granted the land use intensity change. It can change it to a less intense land use intensity district or otherwise modify that as long as it's doing so in a less intense manner, because, and the point being, if the neighbors get word of one particular application, we're not gonna go any more intense, because someone might say, hey, I'm fine with that, but, you know, if you went higher in intensity, I would have a problem with that and I didn't know to come if you're gonna do that. But we'll figure if you're going to a lower intensity, if they had an interest before they show up and if they were okay with it, they didn't show up, they wouldn't have a problem with a less intense use. That particular provision then also kinda carries into one of the purposes of section 18, is a little different, is what it does, it sets up a slightly quicker procedure where someone intentionally comes in and asks to reduce the intensity of their zoning as opposed to increasing. So, instead of going from agricultural to suburban residential, and they wanna go the other way, and there may have been one tonight, it might have gotten the benefit of this slightly quicker process. It spells out which processes or changes would be applicable. So, anything going from whatever it is to AG would be able to get the benefit of this. Anything going from...
When you say the benefit?
Of this process, this special process. There's slightly quicker processes, like get rid of the filing fee.
Is it, is it expedited?
Yes, yes.
It goes straight to the board?
It goes straight to the board, it does not come here. So, that's the biggest, then that'll save, you know, a couple weeks in the process.
Yeah. And who, does staff make that recommendation in concert?
Staff, staff will review, staff will review and provide a report.
So, then if the community didn't like the change or wanted to comment or they would go, the commissioners would hold a hearing?
Yes.
An actual hearing?
Yeah, and there will be, same, a legal ad. Legal ad will be published, saying it's still subject to public hearing requirements.
Okay.
And those are, that's the nature of the changes.
Okay. So, we add a requirement to hold this public hearing and y'all in the public. So, any comments?
I got a question on that last one about the expedited going from ag, from small lots to big lots, basically. That's what can be expedited, because that's really what we like, I guess. Is that what that's?
I can do an answer. The provision provides four different categories and largely, it's reducing residential density.
Right.
So, first, is anything going, anything going to ag. Second is going from UR, SR, RR, or ER to SA.
Okay.
Any of those, UR, SR, RR to ER, or UR, SR to RR.
Going bigger?
Yes, bigger lots, less dense.
Did they ever address, and this was back in the fall, where they were trying to do some administrative things, and this might have been, the first rezon I did tonight was an acre that was RR that really shouldn't have been SR. And they were trying to alleviate that having to come here where it could just be signed off by the commissioners, just because it was non-conforming, it should have been SR in the first place.
This, I don't think addresses that particular situation. It does provide for a situation where the board of commissioners can initiate a decision and it would be a tougher, quicker process, under a separate rationale when the county does it.
There was this one in that fall where Chris said, that it needed to be, he was waiting on that administrative...
Change.
Change, because it was so cut in your eye what it should have been, but he had the authority and we had to go all the way through the process to get it covered. So, that was it.
I like it.
Further, so, comments from the ladies?
Yeah.
Comments from the board? We're not approving any of this, we're just...
You can make any recommendations to the board you like. If you, if there's anything about it you would change, you're welcome to do that. Or if you'd like to recommend, they approve it as presented. That would be your recommendation.
Curiosity question. Why, if it deals with the Board of Appeals in this first 14C here, did it not go to them instead of us?
So, the very first one...
Section 67-14?
67-14 is a specific section of the code that deals with the Board of Appeals?
Mm-hmm. So, why did the Board of Appeals not review it and hold a hearing on it instead of us? It's just a curiosity question.
Well, that would be a, outside of the required review. Any change to the land intensity ordinance is required to go have a public hearing before this commission. So, it's following those rules. If somebody wanted to send it to them, it's not typically, most jurisdictions won't pass things by specific, you know, formally have a public hearing before that board. Sometimes there's a historic preservation committee, there might be a design review board, there may be all sorts of different boards that might be impacted by a change. The only one that's required to conduct the hearing, in this case, would be the planning commission. And a lot of times, the board of commissioners also.
Further comments from the board? Sounds like it's gonna make life a little easier for us.
I think that was the goal, you and the citizens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, it's not required that we make a recommendation, we can if we like. Any discussion from the board on that?
I would recommend that you do. I was gonna look see if you're required to. I didn't think you were required. Let's see. I mean, if you didn't, it would go forward without a recommendation. Well, actually, right, no, technically, that's if it gets passed. So, as of right now, it would go forward with a favorable recommendation.
Because the commission has asked for the public hearing and suggested the changes accordingly.
Yeah, according to this, any public hearing would require determination. So, I would recommend you take some sort of motion or action on it.
All right, so, do we have a... All right, so, do we have a motion to...
Let's see, if you have no proposed changes...
It said it would go forward with favorable. It says that it would go forward standing as denied. Instead, I put, and it said favorable, but it said favorable on your regular.
Which one are you looking at?
Um, I think it's...
Is this one of the changes?
It was 10.
Yeah, on 10? Yeah, that is to be the, I think you're talking about the change that will eventually come in?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, for right now, we haven't adopted this yet?
Okay, so now it would go, okay, it's currently, it is favorable, but it's future...
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't note that in this, the big thing was the second paragraph. Yes, that is a change that if the Board of Commissioners, that's if the Board of Commissioners didn't take action within the certain period of time...
It would be denied.
It will be deemed denied now. And they can always appeal that and say, hey, we presented everything, you know, you just didn't take action, that's not fair, and they can challenge that decision. But, we just don't want to grant things without actually taking action.
Well, it seems like we can say that the public that was present was viewed the changes favorably and that if the board concurs with that, then we can make a recommendation accordingly.
I agree with that. So, do we need to...
I think an appropriate motion would be to, a motion to recommend approval as presented?
Okay.
Okay, I will recommend approval as, that we recommend to them approval as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Very good. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming and I'm glad that you were here to represent the public at large.
I'm glad to just participate.
Good to see everybody. Will stand adjourned if I have a motion to adjourn.
See, I'm...
We said that we all...
We, oh, we all agree.
Okay, absolutely.
It was the second.
He moved.
She said.
We all agree.
We all okay.